exemplifies total customer service and goes above and beyond to make sure every employee is able to get their jobs done, day or night. Congratulations, Tyson. Now you have the hard part. Congratulations. And your family. The blue something on the back. You can hang out. And this in the footwork you want.
Okay. And then you come right to the middle. If you come right here in the middle.
You guys have system down? Okay, thank you.
There we go. All right, one, two, three, take a couple. You guys look great. Okay. Tyson, do you have any guests or family members with you?
I brought two, my wife, Jaylen, and my firstborn son, Dragon. That sounds weird, my son, Dragon.
Thank you. Congratulations again. I think anybody who's opened their phone and went to take a picture and it says "Data full" knows what you had to go through. All right. Appreciate that. Next, we have a presentation on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the Popular Annual Financial Report. Mr. Jim Clayton is here, sitting in the back. We'll invite him forward to our microphone for the presentation.
Thank you. It's a privilege for me to be here tonight representing the Utah Government Finance Officers Association to present these two awards to West Valley City. The awards come from the National Government Finance Officers Association. As mentioned before, they were awarded for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFA, the Popular Annual Financial Report, or PAFRA. We accountants just love all these acronyms. This is the 27th year that West Valley has received the award for their CAFA. That's pretty good for a city that's only 39 years old. This is the first time that you've received the award for the PAFRA. We'd especially like to recognize the efforts of Nicholas Hales and Don Gru for the CAFA, and Nicholas Hales and Craig Thomas for the PAFRA. These awards are awarded by the GFPA in the area of government and financial reporting, and their attainment represents a great accomplishment by the government and its management. The program was implemented in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles and to prepare financial statements in a sphere of full transparency and full disclosure. This is a major undertaking, as those who have been involved in it can attest. It actually began over a year ago in January with the preparation of the budget, and then throughout the year, recording transactions and keeping track of every dollar. Then enduring the annual beating of the audit by external auditors. And then the preparation of the CAFA and the PAFRA. So with a great deal of pleasure, I would like to award these two awards to West Valley City. If I could have Don and Nicholas come forward. I understand Craig is not here tonight.
Mr. Clayton, you also serve as the president of the COFA. And for those who are not governmental accountants, that stands for?
Utah Government Finance Officers Association.
Okay. Don?
We'll have you to pick up.
Next. And Jim?
Congratulations. Appreciate you coming up. Congratulations.
Thank you. Great to recognize the work of one of our departments here in the city. And so we appreciate the efforts they put into that. We have our public comment period. We have two people have signed up. Jim Beesock is first. And I won't reiterate the rules since the two that signed up have done it many times before.
We're not sure where the speaker is on this, but we'll play you a few recordings.
I think I've got enough. Let me just say, this property is horrific. I find that if there's definitely some more basic development, it's it.
Okay, the next one?
They don't know. They don't know that my attitude is no way in hell I'm going to break on this house. But they don't know. And that's my fault. I mean, every time I borrow, I have this, my internal contest, if you will, is the worst property of the day. And I had one this morning. And between that one and yours, I'm not sure who to award that to. It's not an award you want to win. But, you know, I mean, you know, clearly, the property is horrific. You know, it is terrible. And how it has got to that point, you know, it's not on either of us, you know? And obviously, you're just being brought into this.
And two?
All right. Here's my, here's my, here's my final order of disposition. I would tell you that I have folks in here, five folks in here this morning, different households from single-family homes scattered throughout the city, who have managed to come into compliance. These are folks that hold down a full-time job and manage to bring their property into compliance in one-fourth of the time. So it's, to an extent, it's shocking to me that it's taken a corporation whose business is that property 67 days to bring the property into compliance.
Okay, the first three are pretty self-explanatory. The last one, the only part of that statement that was true is that there was five cases from different folks, single-family homes. The false, misleading, or outright lie statement was they were not scattered throughout the city. Four of them were in one beat, one was in another beat. A quarter of the time, he said it was done, that would be 16 and 3/4 days, or 17. The five cases were 55, 43, 49, 46, and 46, which is a 49.8, or 50-day average. In my review over the last four months, there's been 75, 76, 68, 88, 71, 70, 75. And I've only found two in the last four months that were less than 16 days. It's not uncommon. Only one of the five were in compliance. That actually came into compliance, not all five. Out of the other four, two were given extra time or an abatement was ordered, two were no-shows, and abatements were automatically ordered. These are not uncommon. I could have probably filled up the whole 30-minute timeframe on these. The citizens of West Valley deserve better. But that's all we're going to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Markham.
Okay, Mike Markham. I would like to have Lane pick up the code enforcement issues. I'm a large supporter of our plan to clean up the city. I think it needs to be done. I think we need to get some information out to our citizens so they know what the rules and regulations are, though. For example, my big pickup day was yesterday. You can drive through my neighborhood and probably find a dozen houses that have already started moving their stuff out to the curb for next week. I've talked to Ray Hinkle, and he's talked to a majority of these people, and I guess they believe they're above the rules and the regulations because they continue to do it. People don't listen unless you hit them in the pocketbook. You know, I don't know what else to say, that we need to stay on top of this.
Okay. It's no big deal that you don't know.
I think if we have a developer, or a potential developer out there, they also need to maintain their properties and keep it within compliance. There was some discussion about the 4100 South Redwood Road property. Those people could get in there and spend some time and knock down all of the weeds. That's where it used to be grass. There's a place there where there's been a homeless person sleeping. The sleeping bags and so forth have been laid out for three weeks, I guess. I hope the person still isn't in the sleeping bag laying there, because a lot of people aren't paying attention to that. But we've got the Cowlin property. I haven't been past that lately. Last time I went past it, there had been no maintenance there. And behind the building is becoming a landfill for construction debris. The property where the old Don Antonio's used to be, it needs some attention on 3500 South. I don't know if the same people own all these properties. I think that the properties on 35th are owned by the same people. I still have an issue with the property at 3001 West, 4100 South, with getting it cleaned up. And maybe it's, I need to talk to Lane or somebody to see where we are with that property. It continues to look bad. And another issue that I talked with Councilman Bueller about a couple of times, and we finally got an attempt at it, was mowing the weeds between the Jordan River, 3900 South, where it goes past the trailer park there. I don't know who's responsible for that property, where all the Russian olive trees are. But whoever the West Valley City employee was that attempted, attempted to mow that property, if I was Russ, I would terminate him. I don't know if it is, maybe it's property by parks and recreation, I don't know. But I've never seen such a shoddy piece of workmanship when it comes to a person sitting on a lawn mower. You know, we bought the cute little lawn mower with the arm that reaches out. Mr. Bueller asked them if they were buying it to use it or because it was just available for that piece of equipment. Apparently, they just bought it because they could, because that would have been an ideal piece of equipment to use right there. You can see where they mowed around a semi-tire, some other debris that was left there. Maybe before we go out and try to do these cleanups, we can get somebody to go and see what's in the big, tall bushes before we mow, you know? May take out the sleeping homeless person that's laying there if you don't get out and walk and clean up ahead. It's just like Granite School District. One day, I was sitting at my house, and I heard the person back there mowing and run over a couple of garbage bags with his tractor. Wouldn't get off it, wouldn't mow it, just decided to turn those bags into a whole bunch of little ones. I called the school and told them that employee, if he was mine, would also be terminated. I don't put up with shoddy workmanship, and I don't do shoddy workmanship. If you're not going to do it right, don't do it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak tonight? Seeing no one else, we'll close our public comment period. Oh, okay. He timed it just right. He's practiced it there. Okay, to our city manager for any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
To our council members, any comments? Okay. Let's see. We talked about the policy related to the first gentleman that spoke, and we've covered that. On the second gentleman's comments, those were specific cases. We would encourage him to work individually on those particular items with our staff. With that, then, seeing no further comments, we'll go to our public hearing, application GPZ-5-2019 filed by Ruben Salazar. This is requesting a general plan change from rural residential, one to two units per acre, to large lot residential, two to three units an acre. And a zone change from agricultural to R17 for property located at 2545 South Lester Street, which is just east of Redwood Road, there at 2545 South. We will also deal with ordinance 19-43, amending the general plan from rural residential to lot, large lot residential. Ordinance 19-44, a zone change from agricultural to R17. And then a resolution 19-142, authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement for the approximately .89 acres of property there on Lester Street. That is the issue before us. It is simply going to split that into two pieces of property. And around that, this particular property is the largest and widest on the block. And everything around it, I believe, is on R16. And so, two lots, one about 15,000 square feet, and one where the existing home is is 24,000 square feet. Let's see, anything else here? I don't believe so. And if, are there any comments the council wants to add to that before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open the public comment or input portion of this. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue?
Wouldn't be none.
Yep, it's open to everyone.
Mike Markham. The only thing I don't like to see on here is we're taking agriculture, and we're going to turn it into lots of smaller houses and lots of lots. I don't like to see that. But I think from the address you gave, that it is in the Chesterfield area. Hopefully, if the development that wants to happen there, they're going to be required without extensions, I don't remember the proper term, to put in the sidewalks and the curb and gutter, which there's been some development in there where we say, oh, well, you don't really have to do it right now because it would only be, you know, you would have the only curb and gutter in the neighborhood. So we keep giving extensions and extensions and extension for these people. That, don't do that. I think we need to stop the extensions, and gradually, it'll start filling in. You know, we've got to keep working on different areas, making them nice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And that brings up an important point, as you remember in our discussion, we had that if this is approved, that there would be no further subdividing allowed. It would just be the two lots, not breaking it down smaller. That's an interesting comment. By the way, was there anyone else to speak to that? Before it continues? Okay, please come forward.
Sorry, my legs are locked. I'm Ruben Salazar, this is my property, with what this gentleman had to say. When I bought this place, it was Salt Lake County, or Salt Lake, I guess Salt Lake County still, and West Valley Incorporated. Being from this old, I wasn't from there, but I bought this property, and I got to say, I was real proud of West Valley for cleaning the area up. It really did make a difference. And, but when I bought it, they told me I was owned for duplexes. Not only was it agriculture and horse property, but it was owned for duplexes, which sounded fine. But now that I don't have horses anymore, I thought that particular part of the street has multiple little lots. And some of them are just barely big enough to put a car in, and that's about all. And the houses are very tiny and very shabby. I plan on building a new home there. West Valley's been very good. What this gentleman brought up about keeping things clean, West Valley told me they were going to put curb and gutter all the way down. Now, Lester Street is a main street for the kids to go to school that they walk down. And the only curb and gutter seems to go up to where the tracks are now. And then the Tugan Church that's there, they got it. But north of that is no curb and gutter. So, building mine, I might put that in with that property if it need be. But I always wondered why they never did it. So that's kind of a big question mark about mine. And the other thing is, is the Brighton Canal that they ended up putting behind us. The water master was supposed to come and keep it clean, and it doesn't look like they ever cleaned it up at all. So, those were my only comments, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council. Any comments? Seeing no comments? Any motions?
I think it's important, as you noted, Mayor, that all of this is, the application is a zone at R17, which would be small lots. That's a prenage issue. It's really going to be large, two large lots, and then limited to two large lots. With that, I'll move for approval of ordinance 19-43.
Second. Ordinance 19-43, it's property force. Any further comments? And then I'll ride to our city recorder for the motion.
Councilmember Fiducis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next?
I would move for approval of resolution 19-142.
Second. I think I heard a second there, but someone coughed at the same time.
Second!
Okay. Sorry, background noise. In connection with this, this is where there was the change in the development agreement, exhibit B, for the fact that as a restriction on the development, it would not be further subdivided, it would be a maximum of two lots for what is the current property. It would be two, not anything else. With that, then, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilmember Fiducis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to application ZT-5-2019 filed by West Valley City. This is a zone text change to our code regarding cannabis production establishments and medical cannabis pharmacies. In conjunction with this, we will consider ordinance 19-45. As is known publicly, the state has taken some action with regards to the production and raising of cannabis, or its more common name marijuana, in various strains. And this proposal, recently, the state held a special session, made some changes. This will bring us into compliance with state law, which is interesting, because federal law, of course, it's contrary to federal law. But we are kind of in a unique position where the federal government has laws, but they are not enforcing them. And they are, obviously, in states that have already taken steps where it is sold freely and openly for various reasons. And so, this will bring us into compliance with what is in current state code, just to prevent any problems there. So that's really the introduction to it. So unless the council wants to add any further comments? If not, then we'll open the public input portion. Is there anyone here to speak to this? I think they got a lot more comments at the state level, but at this point, this is kind of a routine technical change. So seeing no comments from the public, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council for further comments or motions. I move for approval of ordinance 19-45. Second. Property force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilmember Fiducis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, then we now go to some resolutions. We'll start with resolution 19-137. This is to execute an agreement between our city and a company, Kettington and Christensen, Certified Public Accountants. They provide auditing services to our city, and this will be for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020? Yeah, because that was just a typo there. regarding cannabis production establishments and medical cannabis pharmacies. In conjunction with this, we will consider ordinance nineteen dash forty-five. As is known publicly, the state has taken some action with regards to the production and raising of cannabis, or its more common name marijuana, in various strains. And this proposal, recently the state held a special session, made some changes. This will bring us into compliance with state law, which is interesting because federal law, of course, it's contrary to federal law. But we are kind of in a unique position where the federal government has laws, but they are not enforcing them. And they are obviously in states that have already taken steps where it is sold freely and openly for various reasons. And so, this will bring us into compliance with what is in current state code, just to prevent any problems there. So that's really the introduction to it, so unless the council wants to add any further comments? If not, then we'll open the public input portion. Is there anyone here to speak to this? I think they got a lot more comments at the state level, but at this point, this is kind of a routine technical change. So seeing no comments from the public, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council for further comments or motions. I move for approval of ordinance nineteen dash forty-five. Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, then we now go to some resolutions. We'll start with resolution nineteen dash one thirty-seven. This is to execute an agreement between our city and a company, Kettington and Christensen, certified public accountants. They provide auditing services to our city. And this will be for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Yeah, because that was just a typo there. Are we auditing?
Last year.
We'd be auditing last year's fiscal year. No, this, this agreement is for the coming year, right? Or is it for the current?
No, that's correct. That is for this one to just end in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually, yeah.
We wouldn't, I'm glad we have the chair of that committee here to keep us on the straight and narrow. Okay. For the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. That is the correction, that is the correct period of time. They will be performing that work, and obviously until the work, until the year is completed, they cannot begin it. With that introduction, let's see, oh, and by the way, the amount of that agreement is seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is pretty consistent with what we've done in previous years. Standard audit required by state law. And so, that's the introduction to the council.
I would move for approval of resolution nineteen dash one thirty-seven.
Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to resolution nineteen dash one thirty-eight. This is a change order to the contract we have already, already have with Acme Construction on the twenty-seven-hundred west improvements project. And this particular change order is for one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. This is for a traffic signal at thirty-eight hundred south and twenty-seven hundred west. These funds will come from our Class C road funds and transportation sales tax. What was happened was, it was thought that they could upgrade certain parts of that, but with further analysis, they decided that the age and condition of the existing equipment, that it would be more beneficial to replace the entire traffic signal. And so, that was the purpose of this particular resolution. So to the council. Move for approval of resolution nineteen dash one thirty-eight. Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, related to that, resolution nineteen dash one thirty-nine is to approve the purchase of traffic signal equipment from UDOT for that particular installation. Let's see, the traffic signal equipment will be eighty-one thousand, eight and nine, well, ninety thousand is the authorized amount. It will cost just slightly less than that, but just to make sure we have any issues related, we will approve, if it's approved, it will be for ninety thousand. What happens is, this could be purchased out on the open market, but UDOT has a lot of equipment. We're able to get a great price because they buy in large bulk. And so, we will be making this purchase from them. With that, introduction to the council. Since we've already contracted for the installation, we better buy the signal. So I'll move for approval of nineteen, resolution nineteen dash one thirty-nine. Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our recorder.
Councilman Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have resolution nineteen dash one forty. This is again on the twenty-seven-hundred west improvement project. This is to approve the purchase of streetlights from Mountain State Sliding in the amount of, well, just under thirty-five thousand, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. It will come from Salt Lake County Transportation Funds, Class C Road Funds and Transportation Sales Tax. These will be eighteen acorn-style light bulbs, which is the style that we are putting across most parts of the city when we need to put them in. So with that, since we've approved the new traffic signal, I guess we're matching streetlights. I move to approve resolution nineteen dash one forty. Second. Property before us. The one thing is, it's not exactly the same. They are both, I think, black. You know, that black paint. But our streetlights will not be red and green and yellow, so. There's no equal. I don't know, maybe the city will pay up some money for some Christmas lights and will string them from one pole to the next or something, I don't know. Maybe, may, yeah. Probably not this year. With that then, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Finally, we have resolution nineteen dash one forty-one. This is for us to enter into another one of these right-of-way contracts and an underground right-of-way easement. This one from Ann Brown for property of fifty-nine ninety west, thirty-five hundred south. This is in conjunction with the work being done on thirty-five hundred south with the improvements, the Mountain View Corridor going in there. And so, taking advantage of the opportunity there, we will bury power lines and do some work along there, and this will allow us to do that. We have done a number of these before. This one is not the last one. We'll have, I think, didn't we have four? Instead of me, we'll do next week, so. With that then, and this one, we, the right-of-way that we obtained will actually cost us fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And so, now is that, that, is just that for the right-of-way, or does that include that portion of the burying? I think it's just the right-of-way, right?
It's just, yeah.
Yeah, because we are actually taking some of their property. We can't own anything for fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Well, maybe if it's only a small portion, it is a narrow lot. I can justify it. Anyway, that is the issue before us, to the council. Move for approval of resolution nineteen dash one forty-one. Second. Property force, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. There's no need for a closed session tonight. That completes our regular agenda. Unless there are any final comments, we appreciate those who've come tonight and the comments that were made from the public. Oh, that's right. It's not my meeting, so it's almost out of my mind. Of course, I'm almost out of my mind most of the time. With that then, we'll adjourn this meeting and we will start our second meeting, which will not be a long meeting, but necessary. So. Move to adjourn. Property force, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Pass unanimously. Our regular city council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. I call the order of the special meeting of the housing authority. Now, we've had an opening ceremony and Mr. Hume is excused. We have the June fourth minutes before us. Do we have any discussion or approval?
I move for approval of the June fourth minutes. Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We have a resolution to authorize a contract for a new software system for the housing authority, replacing our old system. And the cost of that was somewhere around here, thirty-six thousand, five oh two. And then we'll have a contract for the second and third year for sixteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars each. And do we have any discussion or motion on that?
Just a comment, the sixteen thousand plus for the second and third years, is that just for two years, or is that?
Also, we'll make a three, it'll, it's just a three-year contract, as I understand it.
It'll be in perpetuity. This is just for the next three years.
And as I understand it also, this is bringing us closer to HUD requirements and everything for the housing authorities so that we can cooperate better with them.
That works.
And with that, I'll move for approval of, I don't see a resolution number on this page.
Nineteen oh three.
Resolution nineteen oh three. Second.
Thank you. Now, turn it over to Ms. Kinnick for a roll call. Mr. Fiducia Manu?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairperson Link?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
For the first four Tuesday's.
That's it.
They'll be doing their section.